All right, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, March fourth. And the first item of business is the approval of the agenda.
Go move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. And just before we do our employee recognitions, I just want to point out that Commissioners Mojo and Krabunoff this morning are on their way to St. Paul on behalf of Clay County dealing with some legislative priority issues down there. So with that, we got an employee recognition this morning. And this is in grateful recognition for your twenty-five years. Congratulations. All right, Quinn, I've got some words to say. Absolutely.
Right. So for the past five years, Kirsten has led our Adult and Behavioral Health Division with a remarkable blend of wisdom, strength, humor, and compassion. But before she became supervisor, she was already a trusted expert in civil commitments and adult mental health. She built her career on a deep understanding of the complexities of this field, always ensuring that our most vulnerable residents receive the care and support they need. Her leadership has strengthened our department. Her expertise has helped shape policies and practices, and her fantastic sense of humor makes even the most challenging days a little easier. Kirsten, your hard work and commitment to Clay County Social Services have made a huge difference in countless lives. I am grateful for everything that you do, and we're so lucky to have you leading the team. So thank you and congratulations.
Twenty-five more?
Twenty-five more.
That's one thing we have in Clay County is longevity and some of our good leaders through Clay County, and Kirsten is certainly one of them. All right, we'll move on then to citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Nothing online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, we will then move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from February eighteenth.
I'll make that motion. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Next, we have Kathy McKay's. Oh, no.
Both Kathy and I are.
Oh, okay, on the first one? Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll do the, we'll do the program coordinator one first here. So, good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is a request. We have a position that's going to be vacated at the end of this month, and it is with our child and teen checkup program. The challenge is, as you know, our community health board will be, we're in the process of changes there. So two of the counties will be moving on to another, to their own CHBs. So we'll have two CHBs, two counties in our current CHB instead of four. So I'm not sure on some of these programs what the impact will be, but we certainly need someone in place at this time to replace this individual to keep the program going. So she covers the four counties currently and will through the end of the year. There's a potential for internal, but I'd like the opportunity to at least post it and keep that going for this year, and then we'll determine what the needs are for 2026.
So the structure remains the same for 2025?
Correct.
The four counties, and then in 2026, it'll be Becker and Clay.
Becker and Clay will remain in our CHB. Ottertail and Wilken will be doing another CHB.
Okay. And you'll be able to give us a better breakdown of how that funding mechanism may fall in line then, is that?
You know, we're going to be working with MDH. We haven't determined, be working probably through May to hopefully get a better picture on how the funding stream will be. I don't anticipate that there will be significant impact. As long as there are two counties in each CHB, we get the additional multi-county amount. And so, and then we'll be covering only two counties. So it's hard to know right now. We're going to be meeting this week, and then we'll be meeting with MDH in the near future as well to try to break down all of the funding sources we have and how that might look.
I would assume that by the time you are ready to present your 2026 budget, you will have, know that information?
That's our hope. That's what all of the counties would like to know as well, where we will land, how that will look. So that's our goal. So we'll see how we can attain that by that time.
Kathy, you mentioned that you might be able to hire this position from within. So are you looking for backfill?
Well, yep, yes, Mr. Chair, probably backfill. The other option that I'm exploring is a potential for Becker County to take the lead on this position, but I'm not sure where that's going to land, if they have the capacity. We're working with Becker County right now on that. So it could be internal, could be external, or maybe that Becker County, the ideal would be if the Becker County person can take the lead. So I just don't know. I can't predict how that will land right now. In the meantime, you know, maybe that Becker County can do the interim, but like to have all options there in case we need to hire out.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
This is kind of a moving target right now. I'm chairing the public health board this year. There are some unknowns to it, but we have good staff on it. We have a timeline that's been established. So I think we'll know, I think certainly by time to plan budget, there should be clarification on everything, you know, in absence of the possibility, it's hovering over everyone right now, that there'll be cuts to the point that we're going to have to go, we're going to have to punt and figure things out of federal funds. We don't know where that's going to go yet. But this is, I think, this is a good plan to have one of the options that's going to emerge here in the next, what, month or two, when these things need to get addressed, to at least have somebody in mind that you're going to be able to move into that position. So I would recommend that we hire the program coordinator for this position and backfill. Make a motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Kathy. The next.
Thank you.
We have an update on the avian influenza presentation, and we're going to find out why eggs are so expensive this morning.
I'm just excited to not be asking for a declaration for a flood emergency.
Knock on wood now, Gabe.
What did you say that out loud?
You want to start with kind of what you, information you?
Sure. And then you can jump in and correct me.
Yeah, I can fill you guys in on.
Thank you. Okay. So we have the current situation with H5N1, or sometimes just called H5, which is the bird flu. And as you may be fully aware, it's causing outbreaks in poultry, U.S. dairy cows, and then there's been some human cases with those working in that area. The risk to the population, to public health risk, is low. So that's always a concern. Is this going to be person-to-person spread? Right now, you know, CDC is monitoring carefully, watching everything, but so far, it has not been a person-to-person spread. If that happens, that would be another pandemic, so to speak. So we're hoping that that isn't the case. So they're using their flu surveillance systems to monitor this, the activity. This just shows how it's spreading, so wild birds to poultry to cows, and then those that have acquired this influenza, the humans. And then, and the cat thing is just, you know, if they're eating some carcasses or birds that may be contaminated is potentially how it's been, cats have been exposed. There's the exposure cases. So you can see that there's dairy herds, poultry farms, culling operations, other animal exposure and exposure source that's unknown. Again, the public health risk is low. Cases in the U.S., seventy cases, one death at this point in time. Person-to-person spread has not been the case at all. So that's where we're at. And then there's just a number of detections in animals. So what they've detected so far, and you can see the large numbers in wild birds and the poultry that's affected, hence why we have an egg shortage and high-priced eggs, right?
Yeah. So like Kathy, Kathy's information showed there's been seventy human infections throughout the country. None of those have been in Minnesota, and I think the one death was in Louisiana.
Yes.
I believe. And again, that's all been either people that have been exposed by working in either a poultry barn or a, you know, dairy cattle herd. But I just wanted to touch real quick on, we're probably not going to answer your question as to why eggs are so expensive, other than across the country, there's been large flocks of laying hens that have been culled due to this. But in Minnesota, the approach as far as monitoring and information sharing, there's three departments at the state level anyway that gather information and share information with each other and then, and then put that out. But in Minnesota, it is the Board of Animal Health really monitors the situation with livestock and poultry. And then there's MDH, obviously, that, that monitors if there's any human, human infection. And then the Department of Natural Resources really takes the lead on any reports of cases in wild, wild birds and also wild animals. There was back in, kind of when this most recent outbreak started in 2022, there was some reports of fox that tested positive. So that's really in the states, that's where I guess Kathy and I get our information, and if we have any information, or if people contact us, that's where we're directing them to, you know, report, like if you were to notice, you know, wild birds that you may suspect are infected, there's a hotline to report that to the Department of Natural Resources, and they may send a conservation out to collect some of those animals and then have them tested. In Minnesota, I just pulled up kind of the most, some of the most recent information as far as dairy and then poultry sites that have had outbreaks. And the most recent as far as poultry in Minnesota, there was one that was reported on February twelfth, and that was a non-commercial flock, so more of a backyard flock, and that was in Crow Wing County. The really two most recent larger ones were in Wadena County, which was a commercial turkey flock, and they culled 275,000 birds in that one. And then the other one prior to that, and that was in, towards the end of January. And then the other one, most recent, was in Dakota County, again, turkeys, and that was 79,000. So I mean, that's, you know, Minnesota is the largest turkey-producing state in the country, and back in 2022, when this most recent, I guess, epidemic occurred, Candy Way County, which is, I think, the largest turkey-producing county in the state, was really the epicenter. So that's, Minnesota, just obviously, turkey prices anyway, on turkey meat and stuff, really, really were affected by this. Now, this most recent, the increase in egg prices, I didn't see anything real recent in Minnesota as far as, you know, laying hens or flocks that were affected, but I think throughout the country, that's, that has not been the case. But in Clay County, since this 2022 outbreak, I, so I get notified if there's something in, in Clay County, that the Board of Animal Health reaches out to me and just lets me know that there's been either a flock or a backyard flock that's been infected. They do not give me the, the address or the name of the person. They will give an area. They, they have what's called a control zone, so I will see kind of the general area it's in. And we've only had two that have been reported, at least that they've notified me of, since 2020 through two, and both of those were backyard flocks. And the first one, which would have been in 2022, there was 24 birds affected, and then in, in 2024, there was another one with 77 birds. So I know previously back, and I believe it was in 2013 or so, when H1N1 first kind of made its, its run across the country, and we did have some commercial flocks that were affected in Clay County. But so far, I haven't received a report on any in this kind of more recent run of them. And when, when I was notified by, by the Board of Animal Health, they had already depopulated those birds. I'm not sure on these smaller flocks, if they actually went in, or they just had the flock owner depopulate the birds. One other thing that I was asked to do for the Board of Animal Health, kind of when this more recent infection came, or this, this more recent strain was making its rounds, was collect information and provide them with information on large sources of potable water. When they do a depopulation in a large, a large flock, they use a large amount of water. So I compiled a list. Basically, mainly it was fire departments and then city municipal water supply. So they had contact numbers or for, you know, if they needed something after hours, weekends, to get those amounts of water. So that's really been kind of my role anyway in Clay County. There hasn't been a lot of activity in Clay County. Interestingly enough, just again to share some numbers with you, Minnesota has the second highest number out of all the states of birds that have been affected, and Minnesota's number is nine million, 120,000. The, the number one state is California with 23 million. And just to kind of show you the, probably the size difference on commercial flocks, the sizes, California, so in Minnesota, there was a hundred, there's been 141 commercial flocks and 44 backyard flocks, and that total number is, you know, nine million. But in California, there are 23 million, but only 105 commercial flocks. That just goes to show you how much bigger their commercial operations must be than, than Minnesota. But I guess that's, that's what I have. There is a, Minnesota has a avian influenza hotline. It's kind of a one, one-stop shop, so if you're reporting for wild, wild birds, same number, they'll, they'll put you through the Department of Natural Resources, or if it would be a commercial flock or a dairy herd, same number. And, and that is on the U.S., or I'm sorry, on the Board of Animal Health websites, MDH and Minnesota DNR, they'd have the same number. And then I guess the only other thing is, as far as transfer into livestock in Minnesota, there has been some, some confirmed cases in dairy herds. Again, none of those in Clay County, we don't have a, a large dairy. I guess a large amount of dairy farms, commercial dairy farms in Clay County, but the most recent ones on those have been, actually, most of them were in Benton County, Minnesota. There has been, there was a herd of goats that was affected in Stevens County, but most of that, most of the cases have been Benton County and then down in west central and southwest Minnesota, Candy Way County, Lincoln County, Sibley County. So that's what I have. Any questions for us, I guess?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just to be clear and for the general public, we get questions, is it safe to eat eggs? If you can buy eggs, is it safe to eat them? Yes, the USDA said if they're cooked appropriately. So I would say for those that like the runny yolk, maybe that's a little undercooked during this time, but no, it's safe to eat eggs, cook them appropriately. There is no transfer of the virus. Is it safe to eat poultry? That's another question. And of course, they recommend to cook it to the, to the recommended temperature of 165 to eliminate any potential virus. So, and then handling raw poultry, of course, all the, all the things that you need to do to manage that. And then milk comes up. Is it safe to drink milk because of the dairy cows that are affected? And yes, the pasteurization, drinking raw milk may not be advisable, but as long as it's pasteurized milk, that pasteurization is actually killing the virus. So that is all safe.
Commissioner Ebner.
Yep, just, it was just yesterday, I got warned, someone who has another bird dog, and I've got a bird dog, told me that her vet advised her that if there's any dead birds that her dog will, and they'll, they'll head for them.
Yep.
To avoid letting them get a hold of a dead bird. And that's something I think people, dog owners should be aware of. The other thing is, if you see a dead bird, we've got the hotline, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but they do give some advice. If you go on the DNR website, they, they talk about, you know, one bird versus maybe five, five birds. I think their recommendation was, you know, if you see a couple or if they're acting strange, there's, again, some kind of criteria on if you see, you know, especially waterfalls pretty common, like if, if they're kind of swimming around and nonsensical and not flying when they normally would and stuff, that would maybe be a sign.
She had been to her lake place, and I'm not sure where that was, but there'd been ten dead ducks found in the area, and they, the sheriff there put an alert out to everybody to keep your dogs off of the waterfowl.
Yep. Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Does that virus impact all species of birds?
Yes, it does. It's been found in all, it's, I, something it's most common in waterfall, and I don't know if that's just because of they're more of a flock, flock-type bird, but it has been found in, in other, other types of birds.
I was thinking of our bald eagles.
Yep, raptor, no, and there is reports of raptors and stuff that have been. And probably, you know, a lot of times, maybe those, those birds aren't getting tested because if they die, it tends to be one. So, you know, it's not raising those alarms that maybe if you see a flock of, you know, 30 dead ducks or...
All right, any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our annual department update with the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
We have the Sheriff Empton, we have Deputy Chief Martin, Gabe, and Carrie from Corrections. Good morning to all of you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here this morning. I'll get this set up, ready to go. All right, here we are. Well, thanks for having us. We'll get started off with our 2025 board update here. First of all, we'll start off with our mission statement. This is the mission statement of the Clay County Sheriff's Office. We are to enforce laws of the United States, the state of Minnesota and all local ordinance. Further, it's our mission to enforce a law with impartiality and courtesy and respect to the constitutional rights of all people. Further, it's our mission to provide services to the citizens of Clay County that will enhance their quality of life. I don't know if the board's ever seen our mission statement before, but I figured this would be a good time to provide that to you. Relatively long mission statement, it should be shortened up maybe a little bit, and that's something we might work on here in the future. Let's go through some division overviews. Our administrative division consists of myself. I also serve on the Legislative Committee for the Minnesota Sheriff's Association, and I was recently selected to be the fourth vice president of the Sheriff's Association. We have Chief Deputy Chris Martin, and he oversees all of our administrative staff along with our community service officer, Jay Seeballs, that was a new position this year, and Jay has been absolutely great for us, and we do appreciate the board's support in allowing us to hire Jay. He has been just a great asset for us, very happy to have him. And we also have our records division with Officer Manager Heather Cronie overseeing our associates, along with the jail associate as well. And last year, we also started our chaplain program with Chaplain John Bedore and David Juve. This is to enhance our deputy wellness. They have been a good, good addition to our sheriff's office as well. We're happy to have them on, onboard. We have our operations division, which is overseen by Lieutenant Josh Schroeder. The operations division consists of patrol and investigations. We currently have 12 patrol deputies, we have four patrol sergeants, and then two SROs. We have one SRO at DGF and one in Ullin-Hittardall. Our division here for investigations and patrol, we do stay relatively slim sometimes on, on shift and investigations. This is due to FMLA retirements and some unexpected resignation. Also, when you factor in vacation, sick time, comp time, and training, things like that, we are running at minimums quite often on patrol side, and we're running rather short sometimes in investigations. For example, for the remainder of this week, we will be down two investigators for FMLA. And the remainder of the month, we will be down one because of FMLA, and then towards the end of the month, we're going to lose one for, for military deployment. So out of our five investigators, we'll be down one for the remainder of the year. We have our support services division, which is overseen by Lieutenant Chad Hagan. Support services consists of warrants and transports, civil process, and courthouse. We have three transport deputies, two civil process deputies, then we have three full-time court security deputies, along with Sergeant Nicole Reno. We also have five roster court security deputies. And Lieutenant Hagan did inform me that it is getting a little harder to find some variable hour folks for that, or sort of part-time people. It's getting a little harder to find people willing to do that for variable hour. We're very fortunate that we have five right now, and we hope to maintain that moving forward. Of course, we have our emergency management division, right, it's overseen by Lieutenant Tweetin, and then he also has an assistant emergency manager with Sergeant Nicole Reno. Like, is that, or we're not, we're not there yet? Or we're coming up to that? Well, fast forward. Corrections Division, we have Jail Administrator Carrie Tooten, and we also have her assistant by Cody Benson and her administrative sergeant, Jessica Knight. We have four shift sergeants, along with 45 full-time correctional officers. That includes four corporals in there as well. We try and work our shifts in the jail to where we have at least one sergeant and/or corporal on, we, to have that supervisor oversight within the facility. So we like to have at least one sergeant or corporal on. Ideally, having them both on would be, be great, but with vacation, sick time, and everything like that, sometimes that doesn't happen. We also have nine roster correctional officers, and we will go with our operations division overview. So we ended our year with 31,176 incidents, and that was up from 2023. 2023, we're at 25,186. This also does not include the number of calls for service that we took while covering more head shifts. I looked at our numbers today, we are lower today than we were at this time last year by about 1,600. So I don't know why we are lower, other than there's a little bit less self-initiated activity in there, and it has been relatively quiet over the past few, few months for calls for service. I don't know if it's just kind of the winter doldrums or what have you. It's also been a slower year for weather-wise, and usually if we have a busy weather year, that increases our calls for service with crashes, vehicles in the ditch, and things of that nature. So that would play into why we are a little bit lower on calls for service right now. As you can see here, we have our three K-19s, they had two criminal apprehensions, and what a criminal apprehension is, is that is when the, the dog physically apprehends a fleeing subject. We had 21 non-physical criminal apprehensions, and what that is, is if the canine handler makes an announcement, basically saying, give yourself up, or we will send the dog and you will be bet, those people then give themselves up, so that is what a non-physical criminal apprehension is. It's six area searches, six building searches, 45 vehicle searches, six package sniffs, 13 tracks, and eight public demonstrations. So our K-19 teams were relatively busy throughout 2024. Our handlers also spend a considerable amount of time training their dogs. They have to train a minimum of 16 hours per month to maintain their certification. We also received, as you're aware, many donations in 2024 from various different organizations throughout Clay County. We're very fortunate for their support, and we're very honored that they continue to support us. And as you're aware, we received a $40,000 anonymous donation from someone, and to this day, I still don't know who that person is. And I get people asking me, and I still don't know who it is. So we are very grateful for that donation to our canine program. And we've had four deputies assigned to our Red River Valley SWAT team. This is made up of our tactical team, our bomb team, and our crisis negotiations team. The tactical team responded to 31 call-outs in 2024. The bomb team had 54 call-outs, and negotiations had 24 call-outs. And they do train quite a bit throughout the year. They're constantly training, it seems like, to hone their skills and do great work. Operations Division as well, remove the following illegal drugs. Operations division as well, removed the following illegal drugs from our streets, a hundred and eight pounds of marijuana, fourteen pounds of methamphetamine, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven counterfeit pills and forty, or four point five pounds of cocaine. We took seventeen firearms off the streets and seized one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in cash. And then twenty, total monetary value of the drug seizures to date is approximately three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Our patrol deputies did add an additional twelve grams of marijuana, one point one grams of fentanyl, four hundred and fifty M-30 pills and twenty-three grams of meth and fourteen firearms, all taken from the patrol deputies. So it's good work by them, along with some miscellaneous pills and pharmaceuticals. We have pill drop boxes throughout Clay County. We have one in Yulin, one in Dilworth, one in Barnesville and also in Glendon and that was a hundred and thirty-two pounds of pharmaceuticals that were taken from those boxes throughout the year as well. Also, the operations division, they investigated a total of four hundred and twenty-seven cases. That's down a little bit from twenty twenty-three, it's four hundred and sixty-two in twenty-three. And there was just a number of cases that were included as us being primary or assisting throughout Minnesota, North Dakota and well beyond. I know that our, one of our narcotics investigators, he made multiple trips to Arizona and California investigating some of the federal cases that he was assigned to. So they, he is going kind of everywhere to investigate these drug cases. And the cases are there as jail background, serious assaults, juvenile sex assaults, elder abuse cases and everything in between. We also assist our other partners, you know, specifically Morehead with some of their larger homicide cases and things like that. So we are more than willing to assist all of our partners within Clay County and our regional area here. The street crimes, they were busy in twenty twenty-four, that should say twenty-four, not twenty-three. They kept some very violent offenders out the street. We had eighty-three assists for other agencies, sixty-nine warrant arrests, five firearms were seized and twenty gang arrests. So they did stay busy in twenty twenty-four as well. On January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, we did an award ceremony for some of our staff. We recognized Sergeant Darren Bredman, Deputy Brandon Desatell with lifesaving awards for CPR that they performed on an individual who collapsed in a bus barn just south of town. By the time they had the person in the ambulance, the person had regained consciousness and was talking to them. And then we recognized Deputy Tyler Bowman, Deputy Jason Lean was lifesaving awards. They performed CPR on an individual that had fell off a ladder and hit his head at a residence in rural Glendon. And that individual stayed, stayed with us for another few months and then ultimately ended up passing. Family did, did come to the award ceremony and assisted in presenting lifesaving awards to, to Deputy Bowman and Deputy Lean. Also, the subject of Sergeant Bredman's and Sergeant, or Deputy Desatell's incident, did come to our lifesaving award and helped present the award to them as well. We recognized Deputy Zach Johnson as well for, with the lifesaving award. He performed CPR on a young child and was able to bring that child back by the time ambulance arrived. And this was at an area down by rural, rural Rusted. And lastly, we recognize Deputy Zach Johnson, Deputy Brandon Desatell with commendable service awards and this is for their work on September seventeenth with the runaway vehicle incident that had come through Clay County along County Road twenty-six and through Hittardall at one hundred and thirteen miles an hour. The two of them working with Trooper Grover came up with a great plan and they were able to get that car stopped successfully with no injury to anyone. So that was, that was some great work by them. And as you can see from that picture, it looks like I might be standing in a hole because everybody's a little bit taller than me. We got to get the floor checked over there, I think. And these are the deputies that we hired here in twenty twenty-four. We had Deputy Matt Lambert, Seth Saranen, Mac Schultz, Brandon Heide and then our CSO Jay Seeballs. All of them have been great additions to the sheriff's office. We're all very happy to have them as part of the sheriff's office team and family. Our support services, support services transported five hundred and forty-five individuals in twenty twenty-four. As you can see, five hundred and five were prisoners and four commitments. They logged a total of sixty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-four miles. This was slightly lower than twenty-three, but you can see there is why it was slightly lower. We have the Northwest Shuttle that we work with, the following counties up there with Dakota, Sherburne, Scott and, and St. Louis counties. So they're able to save a lot of miles for us and we're able to do the same for them. It's a great relationship that we have with those counties and it works very well for us and for those other counties. We also work with Cass County, North Dakota, as they handle all of our North Dakota transports back and then we handle all of their transports back in, in Minnesota here. So it's a good trade-off and it's a good working relationship that we have with the Cass County, North Dakota Sheriff's Office as well. We also had three flighted transports in twenty twenty-four. We had one from San Francisco, one from San Diego and one from Georgia. And with those, we have to send two deputies out. They fly armed, they pick the individual up and then they fly back with them. Court security, they were busy with five thousand eighty-seven in-person hearings and we were informed that we were going to go back to the level of in-person hearings prior to COVID, starting, I believe we started already, so we're going to have a lot of in-person hearings, so this number could go up. The civil division, they completed eighteen hundred and forty-eight services in twenty twenty-four. As you can see, we had five hundred and eighty-six subpoenas, three hundred and eighty-five summons, one hundred and sixty-five notices, one hundred and twenty-two writ of recovery and completed evictions, two hundred and seventy-four HROs, one hundred and thirteen OFPs and sixty-nine order to show causes. A lot of papers. Sixteen hundred and, I'm sorry, one thousand six hundred and ninety-eight were completed by our civil deputies. And you can see two ninety-four were served by patrol, thirty-two by warrants and transports, seven by investigations, three by the emergency manager, ten by operations lieutenant and one by the chief deputy and one by myself. So we'll jump in and assist wherever we need to and as you can see from there, anybody's going to be able to serve a paper. If somebody walks in the lobby, it's who's ever available to serve that paper will do We also had the Western Minnesota Steam Thresher's reunion. We logged about sixty incidents, ranging from medicals to parking complaints, camping complaints and lost children. They were also very busy directing traffic into the grounds on both Saturday and Sunday. And the next thing I'm going to show here was, this was an email that was sent from one of our first responder partners that we work with very closely out in Rolag. And as you can see there, she replied, "There, another great day at Rolag. Your deputies were once again kind, respectful and so very helpful. There were many times they went above and beyond to make a tough moment in someone's life a little bit better and I want you to know that does not go unnoticed." Like I said, that's one of our first responder partners that took the time to send that to me and I very much appreciated that and I wanted to share that with, with you this morning. With that, we also have the records division and they were entering civil papers, processing permit to purchase and carry applications, dictating reports, submitting crime stats. They also transcribe a lot of our interviews throughout the year. They entered two thousand one hundred and ninety warrants, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-one civil papers, four hundred and fifty-five protection orders and for a combined, in a combined total of five hundred and eighty-nine new and renewal permit to carry applications were processed. And they spent their time with many reports and statements transcribed from the deputies. Prior to going on to the emergency management division, I'll yield to any questions if there are any? Yes, I was executive committee chair on dispatch. At our last meeting, now Sheriff Johnner took over executive committee chair and I took over as the operations, the law enforcement operations chair. So.
And if I should just ask, you mentioned about the Morehead shifts. Is that, is that, is that like a permanent deal or was that like a temporary deal that we were working together with them? I know they were severely short-staffed or.
It's, it's still ongoing. What ends up happening is if they have open shifts, they send them to Lieutenant Schroder and then Lieutenant Schroder will send them out to our staff. As of lately, we haven't had any, any opportunities to work because there hasn't been any open shifts. Our last shift that we worked was Thursday, Thursday night, I believe, and it was worked by Deputy Cochran.
And then one last question. You recently came to us. I think you're my first time. But, um, Cass County, how that going, or how are the numbers affected?
The last report that I received from Carrie, we had not received any inmates yet and I don't know if that has changed.
That has not. Their numbers have been quite low compared to what they had been in the past, so we haven't seen anybody.
Well, and we will hit a little bit on revenue in, in, in the corrections division overview. As we do house for others, we've housed for Beltrami County and Ottertail County. So, any further questions? If not, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Tweetin.
All right, now it's my turn.
All right.
So twenty twenty-four did see little in the way of, of weather-related disasters. We had record low, low snowfall last winter and then really no major summer storms that caused any wind damage or anything like that. But we did see two very large mutual aid events that occurred in Clay County. The first one being the Holly Elevator Fire, which took place on February twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. And emergency management assisted with the coordination, resource management and emergency notification. So we did, we sent out a notification to the citizens of Holly. And then just talking about like the, the coordination of that, we had seventeen fire departments on scene, two EMS agencies, three law enforcement agencies, our drone team, Burlington Northern Santa Fe, Holly Public Works and the Salvation Army. So it was a, it was a really big operation.
And if I could add to that, um, our dispatch center was a big part of the communications to that and the dispatcher that was working that night was nominated by Amanda Glasgow for an award through the Minnesota Sheriff's Association at our upcoming PSAP conference towards the end of March here.
Yeah, we had, I believe, fire departments from not only Clay County but Norman, Becker and Ottertail. So that does, you know, on the dispatch end of it too, there's a lot of meshing of different radio channels and things like that that needs to happen on the, on the backside of that. So kind of going on in that, the photo, the photo on the left is a photo from our, our drone during the Holly fire and you can see that, that building in the, kind of the upper right quadrant, that's the Holly Community Center. You notice the red on there, that's the thermal, that's the heat signature on that building. And just, I just wanted to show this picture because it really demonstrates how valuable the information from the drone can be because when we see that, then we can, we can direct fires, you know, to put water in that, cool that building down. Hot embers, there was a really strong wind out of the south that evening early on and it was bringing just huge hot embers kind of over the residential area of Holly. And again, that drone was, was so valuable to be able to see rooftops and, and be able to direct resources that way. So it really was, just proved itself invaluable on that. And then, uh, the photo on the top is after, afterwards, we had collected information and we had a, an after-action report where we went through and fire departments that were present, law enforcement at that scene were all brought together and they had the opportunity to talk about what went well, what didn't go well, what, what needed to happen. And based off of that, I compiled a, a pretty comprehensive after-action report, which was sent back out to them. And so it gives us and those agencies the opportunity to kind of make, make some changes and also, you know, hopefully going forward, work together a little better. The second, the second really large mutual aid event we had was the Terricon Precast Fire and that took place on October second. And although it wasn't quite as large as far as the mutual aid, we still had fire departments from Becker County, Clay County, Norman County, and I believe we maybe had Pelican Rapids up there.
We did request from Ottertail County as well.
Yeah.
We actually had Parker's Prairie coming.
Yeah, yeah. So again, really, really large, large response on that and we were able to put a lot of what we had learned from the, the Holly fire into practice there. And so the picture on this one here is a image from the drone that was at the Terricon Precast Fire. And again, I just wanted to just show you how important that drone and valuable that drone footage is. And we were able to see the, the hole in this, in the roof of the building there and then also the fire kind of running across the, the roof membrane. And to be able to see that real time and have the, the fire, fire departments, you know, direct streams where they need to be going and they can see, you know, from that that, hey, that stream of water is making it inside the building or isn't. So it's just, again, very, very valuable. Our drone, drone team was requested ten times in two thousand twenty-four, two for fires, four for missing persons, three for suspect searches and one for a crime scene in, in South Morehead. Twenty twenty-four, emergency management training and, and exercise highlights. We did co-host the regional crisis intervention training, which was open to first responders from Clay County, Becker County, Ottertail and Wilken County. Kirsten, who was here earlier for the, the employee recognition, was a big part of that. It was funded through a grant through that group. That was held at Concordia College and we did have a really good response from not only law enforcement, but other first responders throughout the region. The sheriff's office sergeant and sergeants and myself, we attended a wide-area search training. It seems like at least once or twice a year, we, somewhere out in rural Clay County, we have a, a missing person, be it in a cornfield or something like that. So this, this training was put on by, by FEMA and really, really did a good job of helping us to understand maybe how to direct those searches better and use our resources more line, more wisely. Also co-presented with the, the Morehead EM and the Morehead Police Department and active threat exercises at MSUM in Concordia College. So we talked about, went through a tabletop exercise with both of those college on, about an active threat on their campus. Attended two cybersecurity exercises, planned and attended a regional EOC exercise, which took place in Menomon and contained EMs and first responders throughout the Northwest Minnesota. And then twenty twenty-four, planning an outreach. We participated in summer and winter weather awareness weeks as we do every year. Worked closely with the National Weather Service Office out of Grand Forks to, to maintain our storm-ready certification for Clay County. Attended quarterly preparedness meetings with the Fire Chiefs Association, EMS Association, Long Term Care Association, which Sylvanas from Public Health and myself co-chair. And then Corporate Foster Care Association. Active with HSEM Region Three Joint Powers Board. I'm two years running now the, the president of the Joint Powers Board for Northwest Minnesota. And then AMM, which is the Association of Minnesota Emergency Managers, active with, with that and attend their conference. And then our county EOP this last year in two thousand twenty-four went through the regional review committee. So they bring representatives kind of representing different disciplines. So there'll be someone that comes in from EMS, Public Works, whatnot, and we sit down and we go over the county emergency operations plan to make sure everything is up to date and it's meeting all the requirements of the state and FEMA. That is what I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you. We will move on to the corrections division. We currently have two full-time positions to fill. I believe that's up to three now. Correct? Yep. We've been trying to, you know, be fully staffed since twenty twenty-one backfill. We will get there. It's, it's a constant process, constantly interviewing and hiring, but we will eventually get there. After one year of body cams, these were well-received by our staff. They've been very crucial for documentation of certain legal processes and it's also helped us train new staff with scenarios that do occur within our facility. These have been a very good addition within our correctional facility and we're very fortunate for the support for these and thank you for that because I believe that, that's eventually going to save us in the long run, you know, potential millions of dollars of a lawsuit. So they're, they're a very, very good addition. Here's some stats for our, our county jail here. We booked in twenty-five individuals in twenty twenty, twenty-five hundred individuals, not twenty-five, twenty-five hundred. Currently have five individuals that are going through the mental health commitment process with the courts. Five of our, five percent of our jail population could be considered mentally incompetent, which is down from about ten percent last year. And we did have one individual in custody for four hundred and fifty-two days that was deemed mentally ill and dangerous. We were, we waited that long for a bed for this individual. We finally was, were able to find him a bed and get him out of our facility on January twenty-first of this year. That is not acceptable in my opinion. That is a failure on the department health. That is not acceptable, in my opinion. That is a failure on the Department of Health. They have 48 hours to find a bed for somebody. That puts a lot on counties. It puts a lot on our jail staff, having to deal with somebody for 452 days. It puts a lot of liability on our county as well in the event of something were to happen within our facility. I have been working with the state in regards to trying to find a better process with this. The Sheriff's Association does have a representative on the 48-hour Priority Admissions Task Force to try and make this to where it is a lot quicker. 452 days is probably one of the longer ones. I know Hennepin County has one or had one that was over 900 days. And Hennepin County and Clay County are the examples that continue to be used at the state level as far as how this is unacceptable. Some revenue generated by our jail is approximately 182,000 for 2024 for housing medium and maximum classification inmates for other jurisdictions, DOC inmates and federal inmates for trial purposes. And some of the counties we're assisting with that is Ottertail County and Becker County. We also have a contract in place to house Forecast County, North Dakota. And like we had mentioned earlier, we have not done that yet. We are continuing with the Dream Program within the facility. It encompasses all of our programming that we have available to the offenders with the support of our volunteers. And once again, another special shout-out to our Heart of Clay. We would not be able to do the amount of programming without them. We're very fortunate to have that organization being willing to come into our facility. So again, thank you to the Heart of Clay for all the work they do throughout the year, for not only the inmates within our facility, but also our staff as well. And then the River Project, they recently hired Kimberly Blumel. We were without the River Project for some time due to unexpected resignation within that, within Lakeland Mental Health. But we are very happy and excited to get back on a normal routine with this, this program. So Kimberly's there working, she is full steam ahead, and she's doing a good job for us over there. And lastly, just a big thank you to the Clay County Commissioners and the County Administrator for your continued support to the Sheriff's Office throughout the year. It's a team effort, you're part of the team, and we truly appreciate the support you provide to us. With that, I would yield for any questions.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yeah, not a question, just an observation. I think commissioners come in with a body of expertise in various areas. Finance, rural parts of the county, everybody brings something to the table. Unfortunately, my skill set involves criminal justice, and that could be a real conflict. Except all I need to use my background towards is to validate that we've got an incredibly professional organization, Sheriff, and you can take responsibility for that. That and your staff. I've worked with a lot of your staff over the years. And we have, we have a tremendous correctional facility. We went to the voters and asked them to pay a sales tax to get these things built with the promise that they would meet the needs of the county and that they would be exemplary. I go to an AMC Public Safety Committee meeting, and when they talk about corrections being done right, invariably they talk about Clay County. Invariably, when we talk about the mental health crisis that we have in this state that the state has let go, for the most part, unaddressed, we hear about the River Program and the projects that we're trying to do here in Clay County. You've not, you, you continue to knock it out of the park. And again, all I need to use my little bit of expertise on is to validate that we are very fortunate to have your organization here. I'm grateful for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinger.
So from, being from Rock Lake County, I'd like to thank you guys for being out there, and we can notice you out there driving around. With that being said, with 2026 coming, with paid family leave, what, how are you guys going to be able to keep giving service out in Rock Lake County with that coming down the pipe?
Yeah, that's something that we're very concerned about with the Earn Safe and Sick Time Paid Family Leave. We're going to do our best to ensure that we have people out there in Rock Lake County to ensure calls for service are covered and our patrols are out there. We have excellent staff that I feel don't abuse sick time or anything like that. And I do believe that the staff that we do have will, will come to work when they need to come to work for their scheduled shifts there. We have great people in Clay County. We have great deputies. They're top-notch. I think they're the best in the state, and I believe that we will continue to provide the same service, if not more, in 2026. I do feel that we may need additional staff to assist with that. As you saw, that we are consistently short sometimes in patrol right now just due to FMLA, sick time, comp time, trainings, vacations, things like that. So I do feel I will need additional staff moving forward, but we will do everything that we can to provide the same level of service.
Thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
As, just based on the report tomorrow, it's, it's clear that you guys are always thorough in what you do. You know, your report today was excellent. It gave a good indication. We don't need to be asking what you did the last five days. I think it's, I think it's pretty clear that you guys are busy all the time, and, and that's great. And, you know, I, I think I can speak on behalf of this board and that, that we will continue to provide you with the needs that you have to make sure that our communities are always safe. And we will always keep that at the top of our list. So thank you for your report today.
And I thank you for that. And again, I sincerely appreciate our working relationship that we have because I meet with other sheriffs, and I know it's not like that across the state. I know that sometimes the sheriff and the boards and even the county administrators might not work very well together. But we do here, and I, I do appreciate that. So thank you as well for your support.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you didn't say anything this morning.
It's the way I like it.
It's the way I like it.
All right. Okay, our next item is the Request Approval of Resolution 2025-12 for the City of Holly to Purchase Parcel 56.685.0990. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. This came to board on, I believe it was October 8th. And the City of Holly had originally requested to receive a parcel of land that's in a low-lying area that's not buildable. And they wanted to put a, what was it, like a community garden, something to that sort. They didn't have all the details out, I guess, as specific as the state would have liked it. And the state denied the request for that. Wanted them to do another type of deed was a, what was it called? It was a conditional use deed, and it cost $250. Well, the parcel of land was only originally $500 anyway. So the gal I have been dealing with for a few months at the state suggested that they probably it's on their best, you know, on their best agenda just to buy it for $500. Because under the other use, then they had to comply with all these things or give it back to the state. It was a bunch of rigmarole, so. So then they, they did approve it to, if they could purchase it. So being it was approved before, then that's why I had to do another resolution.
Is this something, because we're approving just an outright purchase, is this?
Well, because, because it had gotten approved by the board that they could take it for free. And this is a tax forfeit property from 2013, so it's been sitting out there since, since then. And it's not buildable. So.
I guess I'm just wondering about the public process for, for, for a parcel.
Oh, anybody can come in and actually purchase a parcel of land that's on the tax forfeit list as long as it didn't get bought at the county, at the sale, the auction sale each December.
The public purpose thing doesn't apply here because they're outright buying it.
Right. Yep, yep.
All right. So you're looking for a motion to replace Resolution 2024-30 with Resolution 2025-12 for the City of Holly to Purchase Parcel Indicated for the Price of $500 and Avoid Any Restrictions in the Future.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a Recognition Proclamation for Social Work Month. Some important people. Quinn, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yes, I am here to request a motion to proclaim March Social Work Month in Clay County. Just have a few words to say before we get to the proclamation. Get on my soapbox a little bit here for supporting staff. Being a social worker is more than a job. It's a passion and a calling. It requires empathy, resilience, bravery, and an unwavering commitment for helping others, particularly the most vulnerable in our communities. Whether consciously acknowledged or not, those who enter this profession do so out of a deep sense of duty to advocate for and support individuals and families in need. Social workers navigate complex challenges, like Commissioner Emting said, 452 days of an individual being in a jail that doesn't belong there. Couldn't support that more. Their impact extends far beyond office walls, inspiring hope and fostering positive change in the lives of countless individuals. Through their dedication, they empower people to overcome barriers, access critical resources, and build brighter futures. Despite the immense value of their work, social workers often go unrecognized, balancing the scrutiny of the community, the courts, and the state while serving those in crisis. Yet they remain steadfast in their mission, proving unwavering support and advocacy, or sorry, providing that. Proclaiming March as Social Work Month is an opportunity to honor and celebrate these incredible professionals, recognizing their contributions in making our community stronger, safer, and more compassionate for all. With that, I would request that the motion is approved, and we.
All right. Well, we do have a proclamation here that we will first read. And I will, I'll start off. Whereas the social work profession is dedicated to enhancing the well-being of individuals and strengthening communities by helping people navigate challenges and meet their basic needs, particularly the most vulnerable among us, and?
Whereas social workers advocate for social justice, empower individuals and families and work tirelessly to promote policies and practices that ensure equal rights and opportunities for all, and?
Whereas Clay County social workers provide essential compassionate services that support individuals, children, and families, helping them overcome hardships, build resilience, and contribute positively to our community, and?
Whereas in the past year, Clay County social workers have completed over 3,595 intakes for service, served over 85 children in out-of-home care, conducted over 305 child protection assessments, 175 adult protection assessments, and 1,209 Minnesota, men choice assessments, assisted 921 individuals who are elderly or have disabilities and remaining in their communities, licensed or certified over 309 homes for daycares, child foster care, adult foster care, and corporate foster care, screened over 144 individuals for mental health and/or chemical health civil commitments, and conducted over 189 chemical health assessments.
Now therefore, in recognition of the invaluable contributions of social workers in Clay County, we, the Commissioners of Clay County, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Social Work Month. We encourage all members of our community to join in celebrating and expressing appreciation for the dedicated professionals who provide critical support, advocacy, and care to those in need. Their unwavering commitment strengthens our families, citizens, communities, and our future. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Ms. Chair, I move, I make motion to adopt and proclaim March 2025 as Social Worker Month in Clay County.
I will second that.
You have a motion and a second on the proclamation. Any further discussion? Mr. Ebbinger.
I'm married to a licensed clinical social worker. She's retired right now. But for our, for her entire working period that we were married, I got to see the incredible contribution that social workers make to the community. And since coming to Clay County, Quinn, your people have just done nothing but demonstrated that they are at the top of the, of the standard for social workers. We're lucky to have you. This is a good proclamation and a happy Social Worker Month.
Thank you. They do great work. Thanks.
I, I'd echo that, and I just, some of the work that they do, it can be very stressful. Seeing what goes on in some of these families in our communities is, it can be heartbreaking. And, and your staff are the ones who are the boots on the ground, so to speak, that are trying to make the best of any situation that they can. And, and we've got a, a good group of people in Clay County. I've had the opportunity to witness that over the last number of years. And, and I'm, I'm extremely proud of all of the people that we have working within your departments, so.
Thank you.
All right.
I've got the next.
Okay, we didn't vote, did we? Okay. All right. All in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, Quinn, then you got one more thing here, don't you?
I do, yes. Thank you.
Request to hire a social worker position for the Adult Behavioral Health Division.
Unfortunately, I have to follow that up with, we're losing one. As you can see, I'm here requesting approval to hire a social worker in our Adult and Behavioral Health Division. This staff works specifically with civil commitments and treatment coordination. It provides intensive case management and oversight for individuals with substance use disorders, mental health disorders, and complex needs. This position specifically also is an active participant in our drug court program, also works with pregnant and using mothers regarding their treatment needs as well. The need for this position is critical to ensure continuity of services for us and maintain our department's capacity to respond effectively to the increasing demands of substance use disorder services, civil commitments, and our specialty court programs as they evolve kind of over time. This request comes as we continue to experience the loss of our highly skilled staff to the state. We are losing another one to DCYF here, unfortunately. This is the third employee now in a row I've had to come to who has accepted an offer from the state in recent months. I do feel the need to highlight our staff's expertise and experience is really what the state looks for and seems to be why they keep taking our good people. With that, we would post immediately, assuming that this would be approved. Current wages for this position are grade 18 step 10. We budgeted for that in 2025's budget. We do anticipate that a new hire would start on grade 18 step 1, which would create an estimated cost savings of $19,301. This position does generate a small amount of revenue for billable services that they provide, estimated to be about $9,700 per year. I am looking for backfill as well, if that is something that, that the Commissioners would approve. But with that, I would yield for any questions that you have.
All right. Any questions?
Ms. Chair, I'd move that we approve a replacement of so, social worker position within the Adult and Behavioral Health Division and backfill if necessary.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Quinn. Our next item is the Approval of 1790 Tax Credit Allocation Letter for Klein-McCarthy Architects and Gert's Construction Services. And this is in regards to the, which building is this?
The Withdrawal Management, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, the, the question before you today is there's been a request made by both construction engineers and Klein-McCarthy Architects to take advantage of an energy credit tax on our, on our Withdrawal Management facility. It's not, it's, because we're a government entity, it's not something that we're able to participate in. And, and so Joe's been working with, with the two entities over the last few weeks to bring this item before. Joe, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. So the board would be requesting permission, or we'd be requesting permission of the board to sign the document allowing them to go after the tax credit. At this point, we don't know exactly what that dollar amount would be because they would have to go through the process with this, with, through the IRS to identify what that dollar amount could potentially be. Just for, from a history standpoint, we did do this for Klein-McCarthy back in 2018 at, at the completion of the Law Enforcement Center and Correctional Facility.
Yeah, and just, just to add to Steve's stuff there is, basically, they have to do a study is what they do. is what they do, and then this study allows to prove that they've designed it and built it properly. And a lot of times you'll see, or sometimes you'll see the guarantee for these tax credits in the contract when we first signed, and so neither Gertz or Klein-McCarthy had this in their contract, so I worked with both of them to give them 50% of the allocation, and both of them agreed. So the letter you see is a joint, joint sign between the two entities, and they've agreed to work together with the study itself, and if all goes well, they would, they would claim 50% each of the tax credit awarded, so.
Okay. Commissioner Bear.
Is this common for entities like this to come back and ask for this tax credit?
Yeah, in the architectural world, a lot, and some, and not as much in the contractor world, but both of them do apply or do qualify.
We actually had this incorporated into our previous contracts, didn't we, with the?
We did not, but they came before you to request that back in October of 2018.
Okay. All right, so we're looking for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve 179D tax credit allocation letter for Klein-McCarthy Architecture and Gertz Construction Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We were four minutes ahead, so we're taking a three-minute.
Thank you.
... for the Clay County Attorney's Office. Brian, I'm assuming you want to start off?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'll just start off, and I'll turn over to Pam Fosser, my chief for the criminal division in the office. But we did come before the PIC. We are looking to obtain a facility dog to help with working with victims, help working with traumatized people that might regularly come through our office. They're dealing with difficult situations, dealing with going through the court system, and so the dog that Pam will be explaining and that facility dog piece is a process to go through, and, but mainly wanted to be able to present to you, talk to you about. There are several counties throughout the state that have worked already do this and show the importance of it, and the legal legalities of it, if you will, have already kind of somewhat been worked through to the system, and definitely something that I think can benefit people within our county and people that come through our office. So I thought, again, we have talked to the PIC already, but we wanted to come before the board here and present to the board.
Pam.
Thank you.
Good morning, Pam.
Thank you for your time this morning. Like Brian said, this is a kind of an endeavor that we've looked into about four years ago. I met with Kelly Troutman in Stearns County Attorney's Office. They had a facility dog. My experience in the county attorneys in preparing trials and witnesses and children for trials is trying to get them comfortable and not re-traumatizing them through the experience. Any way I can do that or find a way to do that, you know, I'm always looking for that. So when I learned about this facility dog, that's exactly what these dogs do. They help, they're trained, born, bred, raised, trained to do this work in a facility such as a courthouse. So I brought it to Brian, and we've been kind of talking about it over the past few years, and we've kind of decided now at this point, this would be a good opportunity or a good time for our office to seek these dogs. So I have done a PowerPoint, and the first part of the PowerPoint will explain to you kind of what this facility dog is, and then at the end, kind of what our proposal would be to get a facility dog within our office. So what we're looking at is it's a dog that will work in a courthouse. It can also work in prosecutors' offices, child advocacy centers, family courts. They primarily provide a calming influence for children during stressful legal proceedings. They are legally neutral companions, so for witnesses, so they can be used not only for prosecution, but if a defendant had a witness that they wanted to use the dog for, they could do that. They could be available for jurors after jury service, after they've gone through a significant trial with some traumatizing. They're actually available to those people as well. So any emotional support that somebody needs in the court system, that's where these dogs work. In Clay County, it would be employees similar to a canine with the sheriff's office. It would be a coworker within our office. It is not a pet, and its job would be to provide necessary comfort where and when it's directed by its handler. So unlike a therapy dog that is assigned to a person, facility dogs are assigned to a handler and then provide the service to wherever the handler directs. It's not an emotional support animal, and it also would not be a distraction to office staff. I mean, we would put very strict rules in place of what this dog's purpose is. It's not to run around the office for people to play with during the day. It would have a very specific job within our office with restrictions. We would plan on using this dog mainly for pre-trial meetings with victims and witnesses. We've had, I think, when Brian did his presentation last year, or last week to the board, the amount of violent crime that we see going through our office with murderers, sex assaults, serious assaults has gone up quite a bit, and this dog would provide service to those people. When we meet with families of murder victims, we'd meet with children of sexual abuse, we have to have several meetings with them, and the dog would be available during that to provide support. Also during trial for victims or witnesses allowed by the court, this was an issue for Stearns County when they first got their dog, because nobody had done it before. They have gone through all the litigation, all the paperwork, all the argument to get a dog on the witness stand with a victim. It's also been affirmed by the appellate court at this point, so all that legal work has been done for us by Stearns County. They've provided us with all their documentation, so when we're ready to roll with the court system, we have that all in our back pocket already to get going. We'd also use it for contested hearings. We would also use it to support Clay County office staff and other employees as needed, social workers that, you know, may have a tough case with a family or attorneys that have gone through a tough trial. The dog would be there for that support as well. And finally, it would also, as far as the county goes, promote goodwill within the county and victim support in the community as needed. Like I just mentioned, why we're kind of looking for one is the increased number of violent crimes. There's overwhelming research and opinions that a facility dog not only helps reduce the stress and trauma on victims, but it also helps facilitate a victim or a witness testifying and relaying information in a truthful manner. There is four other counties in Minnesota that have used this dog similar to this, and it's just another toolbox in our office to help victims and for successful prosecutions of violent offenders. These are three of the four dogs currently working in courthouses in Minnesota. Nova works for Stearns County. Dino works for Anoka County, and Nori works in Ramsey County. Nova and Nori are actually littermates, and they come from Helping Paws, which is an organization that we would be looking for to get our dog from. And I'm going to play just, Nori, or I'm sorry, Nova actually was on Good Morning America, so I'm going to play just a clip of that and what she does to kind of give you an idea of how these dogs are used and specifically how Stearns County uses their dogs. I'm going to apologize, because when I put this link in, I could not get rid of the ad, so. There'll be a quick ad.
3.5 million in revenue at a 6X ROAS. Those are the numbers my business has generated since I first started working with ManyChat and Instagram. They are my secret weapon for customer acquisition. We know how hard it is to get people's attention nowadays, and once you get their attention, the question becomes, how do you keep their attention? Thanks to ManyChat and Instagram, it has never been easier to build trust, likability-
We are back with a revolutionary addition to a courtroom in Minnesota. Meet Nova, the six-year-old golden retriever offering emotional support to child abuse victims and witnesses on the stand. The state's first facility dog, changing the justice system.
We have a new coworker at our office. Her name is Nova. No offense to my human coworkers, but she is the best.
Helping Paws is a nonprofit. We started our facility dog program about five years ago. We breed and train service dogs and facility dogs. We use golden retrievers and Labrador retrievers because they are people pleasers. Janelle came to us through one of our foster home trainers, and they started to work on Nova being paired with the court.
Nova began work in the Stearns County Attorney's Office in October of 2019. These are our dogs that are very specifically trained to come in and deal with persons in traumatic situations. We first had her in the office interacting with child abuse victims to help our children explain to a group of strangers what has happened to them. Kelly Troutman is Nova's handler, and she was the perfect person. She is the one that deals with the humanity of the persons who have been affected by crime.
We pick Nova for each case depending upon if the victim or witness wants her, and that person can interact with Nova before and after testimony. But getting Nova into the witness stand is a little different, because we have to file motions in that case, which we recently did and were granted twice. Nova's first case in the witness stand was a criminal sexual conduct case. The individual that testified was a teen at the time of her testimony. I was very proud of this victim. She was on the stand for multiple hours, but with Nova's help, she was able to get through that.
The defendant was convicted, and he was sentenced to 360 months in prison. Once people start to see what a dramatic impact it's making, it will become much more common.
I think every courthouse should have a Nova. We know that these dogs are life changers.
Oh, I second that. Everybody needs a Nova, right?
So some of the questions about where the dog would stay is during the day, it would be in the office, in a dog bed and crate. It would be in meetings as needed, in court as needed. It would be with a handler or the assistant handler at all times, so like I said earlier, it's not just going to be running around the office or the courthouse. It will be on a leash at all times. Nights or weekends, it will live with the primary handler, and for necessary vacations, the primary handler, of the primary handler and assistant handler, or the Helping Paws provides a babysitter. It's not a dog that goes to a boarding facility, so. It is a process to get the dog through Helping Paws. You have to do a letter of interest. There's an application process. Dogs have to be available, and they have to match with the handler, so they breed a number of dogs for this purpose, and the amount of interest in facility dogs has gone up, so they've taken on more dogs to breed more litters, but it's a process of two years of training. So the dogs that are available have gone through two years of training and have graduated from the program. Then they have to match with the handler, so it could take, what we were told, last told was one to two years to actually get a dog available. It took Stearns County from when they started the process four years, and Ramsey six years, and that was from the planning to getting the dog. I think once you get to the site visit that we're going to discuss in a bit, it goes a little faster. We would want to use Helping Paws. We've already sent in the letter of interest and the application. Dogs are about $300 for the dog plus the equipment. After two years of training, they put about $30,000 into these dogs, and we get them for $300. It also includes a week of training for the primary handler, and if there's a secondary handler, in Eden Prairie with the dog after there's a match. I did kind of a breakdown of what it would cost to have a dog, and this is a first-year estimate of $3,400. Obviously, not all these expenses are every year, because a lot of it's the setup expenses.
I think maybe, not to, sorry to cut Pam off, but just to point out, those costs would be absorbed through use of forfeiture dollars, so there wouldn't be a cost to the county or to taxpayers. We have forfeiture funds that come in. This is authorized use, and that's what we would expect to use, so there wouldn't be additional cost to the county.
Yeah. So then, there's also, other counties have costs for the handler, and that's kind of what we ran into is the different counties. Stearns County, just, they pay as their handler just as they do their canine, henipin. They negotiate it through a union contract. Anoka simply has a contract with the county that upon retirement, the dog would go to the handler. In Ramsey County, basically, they get a paid parking spot and unlimited comp time. So our proposal that we would like to present to the board for approval is to apply for a dog out of Helping Paws. Like I said, the current waitlist is about one to two years, and as Brian just told you, that we would pay the, all the cost associated with this dog through forfeiture funds. So it would be no cost to the county or to the taxpayers. It would be purely our office providing any expenses for the dogs that were mentioned in that previous slide. As for the cost of the primary handler, the only thing that we would ask is that there be a contract that the dog go to the handler upon retirement of the dog. Very similar to the canine dogs, they, I mean, the dogs bond with their handler, and after working for the county for as long as the dog can work for the county, we would like it to go to the handler, the person it knows. There is also maybe the fee of travel for the primary handler, if there's any appointments outside of work or regular hours, basically travel expenses if necessary. We talked about who might be the primary handler for the county, and we have decided it would be me. I am not asking for any extra payment. I'm not asking for any, I don't even care if I get the mileage for those expenses. I just think the value of having one of these dogs in the office for the work we do is worth it to me, so. So the next steps is, like I said, we've already sent the letter of interest and the application. The next step would be a site visit where they would come. They would look at the courthouse, the office space. They would come to my home and look to where the dog would live. We'd also secure commitment from someone within our office as a secondary handler in case I'm not available to handle the dog for a proceeding, or if I ever take a vacation. We have several people in our office that, or a couple of people that have been willing to step up and say they would be the secondary handler. The next step is that Helping Paws would bring three to four dogs to the county to meet the handlers, to see what the space is like, to see what the match is, and then to see if we get approved for a dog. Then we just basically wait, till a dog becomes available. I know that they do have a graduation coming at the end of April. I don't know if all those dogs are spoken for, but if not, we would just wait for a dog to become available. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
I know in your presentation to us at PIC, you had mentioned about being the primary handler, and I didn't ask the question then, but I'm assuming you've had some experience with dogs in the family?
Oh, gosh, yes. I have, I've got two, three dogs, actually. They've all gone through various forms of the obedience. One I do agility with, the other one I do obedience with. So I've had dogs going through training probably for 25 years.
Very good. Commissioner Bear.
How typically do these dogs stay in service?
Well, I did ask that. So they come to us at 2:00. It really depends on the amount of stress you put on the dog, because this is very stressful for a dog to provide the service. Like Nova, in her trial experience, that one trial, she was on the stand for five hours, sat there for five hours with someone, and basically absorbing that stress. hours, sat there for five hours with someone, and basically absorbing that stress. When I talk to Kelly, she's hoping that the dog makes it to 11:00 to do service, but it's really Helping Paws every year. You have to report to them, and they check on the dog. And if they tell you this dog has, is too stressed, it's done. Then you have to retire it. But I mean, it could go like from 2:00 until 11:00 is the hope. It can go longer than that. It just depends on the amount of work the dog does and how they handle that stress.
I know in, I think it was in Brian's comments, or maybe it was yours, but also it was pointed out that which counties currently do have them, and, you know, it's quite evident that they're larger counties. And I think in those larger counties, is we're probably much more likely to have more of these stressful type of cases compared to, you know, the smaller counties, even in the northwest part of Minnesota. But as we continue to grow, I know we've talked about this in PIC, and our PIC committee just believes this is a great idea. Commissioner Abinger, do you want to come?
Yeah, I was just going to say PIC has approved this to come up, and I think it's a great idea. I think we need to get in there and get in line. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve a facility dog for Clay County Attorney's Office.
I'll second that.
And will that motion include, then, that the funding would come from forfeiture funds?
Yes. The funding would come from forfeiture funds.
Okay. That meets your second.
Yes.
All right. Brian, are you good with that language?
Absolutely.
There you go. All right. Any further discussion?
Just one question, one more question. Allergies, is there anybody allergic to dogs down there?
I think that there is, I think the discussion about that is making sure, I would say only first, that, you know, the idea is we have office space, we, there's, it's either crate or bed or both. The dog is kept, you know, in an office. It's not just circulating and going around people. Nobody within my staff currently has any kind of allergies, but even if it ever comes up with, say, victims, they're always asked if they want to have any contact with a dog, whether they just don't like dogs or don't want to have any contact, or if there was any allergy piece, we'd be very cognizant of that. And I think the same, if we ever had somebody that we hired, we would just ensure that the dog is not around.
Operation.
Yeah. Make sure that person is, you know, not around them where the dog's going in there, so.
Yeah, that's something that, and we've talked to Stearns County, and actually Ramsey, because they've got Golden Retrievers, and it's, the dog is never presented to anyone that doesn't want to be. It's always asked before the dog's ever presented. We understand that there's a lot of cultural issues, too, with some people that don't like dogs, or it's a cultural thing. So the dog will never just walk in the front door, be walking around the courthouse. It will come in a separate entrance with me. It will be kept away from anybody that doesn't want the dog around them. And the office space, I think that we're thinking of, is not within the main part of the office. It's off to the back, so it will be, you know, separated out from kind of the busyness of our office.
Did you mention that this would be, we list this with MCIT? Do we have that conversation?
Right. It is probably the one other piece that we do need to make sure, just as we have. And we already have insurance that covers the canines. We would just put that on there. I don't expect that. So that is really the one, if you will, expense. I don't expect that to really be anything, to be honest, because I think, I mean, this type of dog is not even a dog that's, you know, at the level, you know, has the ability to attack or anything else. We don't, we're, this is a trained therapy dog, if you will, I mean, or a facility dog to help people. It's, you know, so I don't expect that. I think we've talked about that with.
Yeah.
I don't think there's much extra to it, other than we would put them on there. That is correct.
All right. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If o was the same sign, most agreed. All right. That's approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We'll keep you updated as we hopefully hear from you in the future. Thank you.
We'll bring the dog up.
Will you be able to bring that dog up here?
Yep.
So we won't be able to give them Milk Bones and?
No, with Pam.
If during the visit, they want to talk to the commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. We let them now. We're fully in support of it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll move right into committee reports, and I know Commissioner Abinger has some commitments, so maybe we can hopefully get through everybody before he has to leave, but we'll start with Commissioner Abinger.
Thank you. On Tuesday, the 25th, we had a PIC meeting, which covered the facility dog we've just talked about. Also, some of the time off from work issues that we're looking at, just to update our employee manual with election judges, organ donors, bone marrow donations. All of those are state law. They're going to be included in policy. HR benefits discussion for 28 full-time employees. That's kind of a work in progress, looking at what's moving forward on that. We also had a social worker vacation issue, which I think is being addressed as well. Later that, no, I'm sorry, later that day, yeah, I remotely, well, en route to the cities for AMC, I did pull over on the side of the road and remotely attend the Triple RDC Board Meeting, during which time we approved a $10,780 expense for replacement of the UPS battery system they have in the dispatch center. I had a project update on the building coming up, and then we had a vote on accepting a bid from Edge River Solutions for fiber optic feed into the dispatch center. As I mentioned, we had the AMC Legislative Committee meeting last week. Just run over some of the highlights in general session. Governor Walz came and spoke to us, and then Legislative Leadership Panel of Speaker of the House, DeMuth, Speaker Emeritus, BFL Leader Hortman, Senate Majority Leader Murphy, and Senate Minority Leader Mark Johnson were at the panel and responded to questions that were provided by the AMC staff. It was very enlightening on where our legislative issues are right now, or at least where the positions are with these people, and gave us, hopefully give us a little bit of an idea of where we're moving forward. We also, on our day at the Capitol, all of us were present. We met with Senator Rob Kupchak, Senator Mark Johnson, Representative Heather Keeler, Representative Steve Gander, and Representative Jim Joy. We had some good, informative, positive discussions with them on where we're going to progress, hopefully during this session. On the 27th, I attended the AMC Public Safety Policy Committee. We discussed some of the issues that are, some of the subcommittees that we've got. Reported then, we had Emergency Response Systems, Emergency Medical Services, Community Supervision, and Mental Health Care that gave brief reports. We also had the presence of Kendall Hughes, who has been part of the restorative practices with the state, and he was here when restorative practices came to do the community panel for Clay County and looking for a grant that we're currently still waiting on, aren't we? He addressed what these, the benefits of the restorative practices are, and he identified the Clay County panel and Clay County's efforts in getting this grant as pretty much exemplary of what we should be doing, which was kind of nice to hear. Later, well, on the 27th, which is when that meeting occurred, came back from St. Paul and got to Fargo, and we had the diversion Board of Authority meeting later that day. Had the usual general business finance report, voucher approval, looked at some of the contracts and MOUs. They were presented and approved. I had an executive director update and general counsel update. We did discuss a Technical Dispute Resolution Board that was updated to us by general counsel, and as, after the ruling from Attorney General Wrigley on the status of this being a public meeting, all three of the people have resigned, and currently, they are working and getting a new panel together for this and for the financial resolution, should we need it, and trying to find some people that are willing to do this as a public meeting, which pretty much deviates from the way it's generally done. But that is a ruling, they've got North Dakota for us, and we're going to have to live with it. Had a sales tax update, and then we had a closed executive session pursuant to North Dakota law for the attorney consultation and direction of the general counsel and the executive director involving mediation or continued litigation and force of terms and conditions of the separation and release agreement of the former executive director. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Abinger.
Last Tuesday, February 25th, I had an MRC meeting down in St. Paul where we went over the legislation update, given it only, it only started 10 days at the House prior to that, so there wasn't too much to mention on that. We also had a round robin with all the other counties there, discussing our issues that each county had. Then on the 26th, we had the AMC Legislation Conference start, and we had a full day at the Capitol where we had all our legislatures from Clay County. It was a very informative, very, yeah, I thought, very, very well done, first time being there, very, enjoyed it very much. And then the next day, February 27th, we had the Transportation and Infrastructure Policy Committee down there as well, where we had a MinDOT Road Funding Report, where there's continually being a gap on funds going into the MinDOT Road Fund. So we had a report on that, saying where the money's coming from, where all the money comes from, and where it's going out to. And right now, there's a gap there. They're figuring out how to fix that gap so we don't lose too many dollars. So then we also had a legislation update with priorities and bills of interest to keep an eye on and seeing how they're moving through the House or Senate. And then we also had an update on the public land survey system, which Clay County is doing, where we go and mark all our section lines in the county, when we've been doing that for the last couple of years. And that meeting adjourned after that, and that is all I have for committee assignments.
Reports. All right. Very good. Thank you. On February 25th, I also attended the Personnel Issues Committee, and Commissioner Abinger has given a good, complete report on that, the items that we acted on today. I don't have anything else to add to that. On February 27th, we did have, of course, we were at AMC. The 26th and 27th, the meeting with the, I mean, the morning session, when we started, we heard from the governor and the leaders of the legislature. And then in the afternoon, we did spend time at the Capitol, as Commissioner Abinger mentioned. We met with several of our area legislatures on the important issues for Clay County, and we provided them with additional material to back up what we're looking for. On Thursday, Thursday morning, we had the policy meetings, and I've now switched to general government. I got in there, and at the beginning, they asked each policy member to pick one of the three items to talk about during the conference. And by the time that process was done, I had to go. And I didn't, I mean, I had to go back to, come back to town, is what I had to do. Just to clarify that. And so I attended the, I had to come back to attend the diversion meeting, but I know, Darren, you had mentioned you were going to try to get to general government. I don't know if you were able to, but maybe I can, if you did, I can maybe ask you to talk a little bit about that. Okay. And then, and then, so then on the diversion meeting, again, Commissioner Abinger, we seem to share some of the same committees, and he talks before I do and takes all the wind out of my sails, so.
Too much wind.
Oh. All right. Okay. So, and then, and then Friday, late Friday afternoon, Jason Benson, the new diversion director, had lined up a meeting with myself as vice chair of the Diversion Authority, along with the Diversion Authority Chair and a couple of others, to go over the Minnesota projects. And what they're, what they're looking for is trying to come up with a timing sequence of when these projects can be done versus when they need to be done. And the whole idea in mind is, is they would like to see us delay as many of these projects as possible to allow time to get the funding for them from the state of Minnesota. I certainly relayed the importance that at some point in time, they're all going to have to be done, and I haven't wavered on that, and that's, and I let them know that that's been the position of our county board as well. So we met, and we're having a highway tracking meeting here this morning, and Jason Benson's going to be coming in, and so we need to, there's several people involved with this process. There's, you know, there's, the Buffalo Red is spearheading a couple of the projects when it comes to Wolverton and Georgetown. Our highway engineer is working on the County Two and the Road Through Comstock Project. Those are, those are Justin's projects that he's working on, so we're going to try to meet and see who should be deciding, you know, timelines for these projects. How long do we dare, not dare, but how long can we let them go out before, before they would need to proceed? I also brought up the potential, if we could go to, for example, the county or the road raises on Highway 75 in Georgetown, that is a, that needs to be authorized through MinDOT, but right now, it still is a diversion project. But one of the things that I would like to talk to Justin about, to see if, if we could potentially look for any MinDOT dollars that could maybe go towards that project. Of course, in the, I believe in all of the other road raises that happened on Highway 75 north of Georgetown, I can't say for sure, but I believe MinDOT was involved with those, and I'm, and I don't know if that funding came through DNR, if it came through MinDOT. So those questions we'll be talking about. So they are, so we'll continue to do that, and ultimately, I think what's going to happen is Jason Benson will probably come to this board a week from today to kind of go over these things. I, and I basically told him that I've got no authority on my own to make these decisions, and so that, I think his plan will then, after our discussion today, he'll come before this board, I believe, next, next Tuesday, because some of these things, they're outlined in our partnership agreements that we have with the Diversion Authority. And so we will need to know if there's any modifications to the partnership agreements regarding timelines and what we may not, may or may not be able to do there. And then, I guess that concludes my report. Steve, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in a meeting in regards to our agreement with the resource recovery facility in the city of Moorhead. They've asked for some negotiations as far as the current contract, and so we're going to be setting up another meeting with City of Moorhead here in the near future to talk about that.
Steve, can I?
Yeah.
I guess I did, I did have that, on the 25th, we did have that meeting internally to, to go. to, to go over some of the responses that we might have to the City of Moorhead and how we're going to deal with that. So, I just want, regarding the transfer station, so.
I participated that morning also in the PIC meeting, that's been well covered. That afternoon, I met with the city councilperson, Dave Steichen. He had an idea about potential leadership training that maybe different governmental entities can look at, so we're going to have, that'll be shared, I think, at our intergovernment retreat meeting on Thursday to find, gauge any interest. Participated on the 26th at the Legislative Conference, that's been well covered. I think, I'll let Darren talk on the policy committee then. I did also participate, participate there on the 27th. On the 28th, we had a flood mitigation check-in meeting that we've been having each Friday. Would just note that Senator Kupac did drop Senate file 2015 on behalf of the Clay County City of Moorhead and the Buffalo Red River Water District for the flood diversion money of 60.4 million. Currently, there's no companion bill, but working with our representatives, hopefully to move that forward. We also had a PRTF virtual call. Senator Kupac was present with our representatives from the county and, and Steve Summers from Solutions, continuing to work through that. Yesterday, continuing to work through flood mitigation documents, we received some additional documents from, from our area representatives, that we did send those in in partnership with the City of Moorhead. And just of note, we did get an email during the meeting that last week, we had a discussion for this board to consider providing additional funds for the water district formation through the judicial process, and Polk County did agree to provide additional dollars also, so all three counties have now agreed. So, with that, that concludes my report.
All right. Brian?
No, please.
Darren, do you want to give my committee report for policy?
Well, you kind of caught me off guard there, so I'm, I'm struggling to remember all the government, General Government Policy Committee, but everything that has been mentioned so far, I have attended the meeting with the PIC meeting and then the AMC Legislative Conference, I found that extremely interesting. That's the first one I had been involved with. On Thursday, I did attend the General Government Policy Committee, they talked about, well, a lot of the, when they went around the room to talk to all the counties and the commissioners, nobody was really very supportive of the cost shift that is coming through the, through the state down to the counties. I don't think anybody said this is a great idea. So, there was a lot of discussion on that and how it was going to impact each of the counties. They did have a, a slide that showed that even, like, if the cost shifts were to take place in Dakota County, that would be a 7% levy increase just by the cost shifts. Inoka County, 5%, Beltrami, 9%, and Ramsey County, 4.7%. So, these are pretty significant levy points just for the cost shift from the state-funded programs back to the counties. So, there was a lot of discussion on that. There was some discussion on the taxation, and then what was very interesting was a lot of discussion on the upcoming paid leave. And then we had State Representative Dave Baker, who is leading the charge right now on delaying that one year, because there's a lot of belief that this program is not ready for prime time, starting January 1st of 2026. So, he went over a lot of those things in some of the committee reports, some of their concerns. I've been listening to those committee reports, and at the last one, they said that they right now have 60 people hired for this new department, indeed, and they're looking to have 400 by, by January 1st, when they start this program. So, there's a lot of angst on, on if this is going to go off without a hitch. And then, the only other thing that I had that wasn't mentioned, that nobody else here was involved with, was our continued meeting with UKG on our pro-talent implementation for recruiting and onboarding. That's going along very well. I would say we're going to go live here in the next couple of weeks, so it'll be a little bit of a training process, because all the applications will then go straight into UKG. So, we'll have some training coming up for department heads and supervisors, probably within the next couple of weeks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Darren. Jackie, do you have anything for us? All right. All right, we're adjourned.